Hello.
You all moved in?
I am, yes. This is a, a, a different background tonight from my usual one. This is my new office in Conway.
Very nice.
Yeah. I have a light behind me. It kind of looks like a nuclear explosion going off, but uh.
Well, you've been a busy boy.
Ah, here, let me get that. There we go.
Oh, much better.
All right, now, does anyone have? Does anyone have any good ideas about how to proceed this evening in terms of running the meeting? You know, before the me- the meeting hasn't started yet. We're all just sort of here. A- a- has anyone thought about how to run this particular meeting and? Um, I, I'd be interested. I have, I have one proposal, but I want to hear if anybody else has got anything.
Well, the, the only thing that I would think of, Jeff, I, I noticed was already reflected in the agenda for tonight, which kind of ordered it, like, you know, the hearing, you know, would open to the public, there'd be general comment, and there'd be education, and, and then you kind of relegated the decision-making about chairmanship to the end of the meeting, and I think that really makes a lot of sense to do it in that order.
Okay, so, um, what I would propose is that, um, um, but like it or not, John Thompson has been voted our chair. He wasn't there, um, but we voted him our chair. If John would open the meeting and say what time it is, and then delegate to me, running the meeting, I, I, I think we could get away with that. And I would do that. Um, there's no regulatory matters, um, on the agenda, so um, there's nobody watching over us for improper procedures, so I think that might work.
Sounds fun. I'll go.
Okay, so, John, if, if you could open the meeting and then delegate the running of the agenda to me, I'll, I'll do that.
Greetings. I'm, um, opening this um, November second, meeting of the Shutsberry Zoning Board of Appeals at seven oh four, and I'm turning the helm over to associate member Jeff Lacy.
Thank you, John. Okay, so, on the agenda, I think we've got, um, public comments, and we have education and guidance, and I don't see anyone here for either of those, so, um, that, I think, takes us, what, to minutes? Yes, make it that. So, um, we have three sets of minutes to review tonight from June, July, and maybe September. I, I have some small comments on each one of those. And I'd need to, I'd need to bring it up to, uh, show you what they are.
Okay, I made you co-host.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have copies of the minutes that they've highlighted or marked up in some way that they'd like to, uh, share?
No.
I reviewed them, but I didn't have anything.
Okay, all right, um, let me let me see. More, okay. Share screen options. All right, so, uh-oh, oh, no. Can you guys still hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, I, I've gone off to some other screen here, let's see. Um, can you see me?
Yep.
All right, I can't see you. What have I done?
Did you want me to share it, and then you can tell me what page it's on, if it's easier?
Well, I have, um, shoot, I can't believe what I've done here, let's see. I have this screen that, uh, just says zoom on it. Um, hold on. All right, I think I'm gonna get off and then rejoin the meeting. Okay?
Okay, okay.
Bye, Jeff.
We'll, we'll wait.
All right.
A little while.
There we go. Back.
So you never left.
No, exactly.
Okay, um, share screen. See, what are the first minutes? The first are, um?
So it would be June twenty eighth.
Okay. All right, can everyone see these that I'm scrolling up?
Yes.
A- anything that I've noted is, um, highlighted in, in yellow. All right, so new associate member when Lacy first joins in, in nineteen eighty-six, uh, that should be ninety-six.
Okay.
Okay. Thompson is a carpenter as, and is currently the embers building inspector. It, it should be an. Is that right, John? Are you the building inspector, or are you an building inspector, or a?
I was just one of them. I was the senior code enforcement officer.
Okay. So, i- if you're probably, say, is currently a embers building inspector.
Okay.
Okay. And right here, it, um, and he plans to still, and I just added be involved. Got that, Carrie?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, when, when you say got it, I'll just move on to the next.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were waiting on mine, okay.
Okay, I, I just want to make sure that you have the ability to make the edits as you go.
Yeah.
Um, okay, and then section forty-eight, this is minor, usually the A is capitalized. Forty-eight, uh.
Okay.
Okay, um, actually, hold on. Oh, a- actually, it should be chapter forty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, and then Michael Pill, um, uh, doesn't have an H in it, it's P-I-L-L.
Okay.
And that occurs here.
A few times, yeah, I can, I can search it earlier or later on, I'll fix them.
Um, all right, down here, um, in this paragraph on the current align- alignment and a new one.
Okay.
Just add the A right there. Okay, um, let's see. This is about me measuring my truck, my, the wheelbase on my truck, and the, my wheelbase is not eight foot nine inches, it, it would be if I had a much larger truck, but it's only six feet nine inches.
Okay, I, okay. I don't know if maybe I misunderstood the reference, but I thought I heard eight feet nine inches, because this was the discussion about the width of the road compared to wheelbase on cars.
Right, yeah. So, so this is the distance, um, from the, the, um, the, the outer tire to the outer tire. So it, it, it should be six foot nine.
Okay.
Can you back up just a paragraph or two, Jeff?
They went.
Okay, right, right there, uh, with the paragraph that begins, Airstock asks how the planning board decided nine and a half feet is adequate. I, I believe the, the proposal was for nine feet. So, I think nine is what that should read there, not nine and a half.
I think you're right.
Okay, I may have that referenced as nine to nine and a half feet, but I can change, do you want me to change it to just nine feet flat on all of them?
I, I thought, well, okay, Carrie, you might know better than me on this one. I, I thought that was the discussion, uh, based on a nine-foot um, proposal, but, um, yeah, I mean, if it's not, if it's not an issue, then I'm not gonna ask it to be corrected.
I can clarify and just decide, uh, or right, planning board decided nine to nine and a half feet, just to make it more accurate.
Okay, yeah, it just, it just makes it a little, it's kind of it, when we, when we made the decision to go to ten feet, it's a little more significant.
Yeah.
Just, you know, going from nine, nine and a half to ten, but.
Yeah, I, I, I remember it as nine as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of numbers thrown out during this meeting, so I'm just throwing them around everywhere, so I'll correct it to nine.
Okay.
Okay. Down we go. We got that. Okay. Um, all right, uh, Lacy shares that one condition he would like, he would add as a permit is to have mitigation to reduce the water flow into the east side neighbors probably, it, it should be west.
Okay, this was also another thing I was confused on, because I think also you and White men were confused on either if it was east or west, depending on your orientation, so I can change it to west, though.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so it, it should be west.
Okay.
There we go. Oh, wait a minute. Uh, here we're on to another one. Okay, all right, here we go. Lacy asks if the array produces twice as much electricity in than the home produces.
It should be uses, not produces.
Uses, utilizes, consumes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And that's it.
I, I forget which one it was on. I think it was the discussion on the Whitman, uh, well, I think it was the night we discussed Whitman, but in some of the conversation that we had leading into that, uh, Jeff, you were asking us to keep a lookout for potential new members for the, for the planning board. Um, and I think the way it came out, Carrie, and I, again, I'll have to go back and, and look at which one this was exactly, but it came out, uh, in search of poetical, poetical new members.
Oh.
That are potential, uh.
Okay.
I, I was, I was tempted to leave it just because it had such a beautiful tone, you know, but.
Yeah, I can, I can change that.
You know where that is, yeah, okay.
Now, we could use some more poets in town government. Okay, are we done with this one?
So we can make a motion to approve with the edits, uh, by Je- by Jeff Lacy.
Second.
I, I hear a motion. Oops, and is there a second?
Yep, seconded.
Seconded by John Thompson. Okay, I'll call the roll. Um, David.
Hi.
Airstock?
Hi.
Thompson?
Hi.
Okay, and I'm not voting, because I'm not a voting member tonight. All right, so let me screen share the next set of minutes.
Oh.
Are?
That would be July thirteenth.
Yep. Here they are. Um, okay, uh, ZVA grants Lacy permission to sign for them.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, it was, so, um, L- Lacy explains that the complete date is when the completed application was filed, and the transmit date is the date is signed by town, by town clerk, but signed as received, so you transmitted it to the town clerk.
Okay.
I, I just added the words as received.
Okay.
Signed as received. Okay. Okay, and another one, ZVA grants Lacy permission to sign for them.
Yeah, I probably copied and pasted and didn't even realize.
Yeah. And gee whiz, that was a nice short meeting. That's over.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else who comments on that, that set of minutes? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve with Jeff's edits.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so I'll call the roll. Uh, David?
Hi.
Airstock?
Hi.
Thompson?
Hi.
Unanimously, very good. Top share, one last, one last set.
I have a question, though. So for this one, Thompson wasn't there, and now that you are no longer a voting member, does that affect, like, voting at all? Because that would only leave Mary and John.
Um, that's actually a sufficient number of people to, you know, it's a simple majority, so it's two out of three.
Okay.
So that's a sufficient, um, number to approve. And I am not sure about the rules about voting on minutes where you weren't there. I think most of the time people recuse, but I'm not sure they have to.
Okay, because I know on some practices, first, um.
And I, I think you can vote on minutes if you weren't there.
That was my understanding as well.
Yeah, but the, the, we're all good, because even if for some reason it's, it doesn't count, you still have two out of three voting.
Okay, just wanted to double check.
Okay, last last one is September seventh. So let's go to those. And go to top. Okay, discuss vote new chair. Uh, I added H to has, has agreed.
Okay.
And a- a- and again, uh, this is John talking about his, his qualifications. He was an, an embers building inspector. Okay.
Right there, slow, go back where there's a motion made. David moves to make J-O-N Thompson the temporary chair. Excellent.
Okay. Very good, yeah.
Two kinds of Johns.
Yeah, I was gonna say, probably defaulted.
We have a Jahan and a John. Okay. Um, all right, down here.
Oh.
Uh, this is that solar, um, thing we last did on, um, West Pelham Road.
Is it?
Oh, no, excuse me, it isn't, no, it's, um, it's between on, um, um, Cooleyville Road. Is it Cooleyville or?
Yeah, Cooleyville, but it wasn't a solar, it was a.
It was a garage.
Garage, yeah.
Special permit to build a new garage. Um, Lacy asks, but in the original plot plan.
I wish I knew what I wrote.
Asks that, that the original, well, I'm sorry, that the, that the origi- I don't know.
Yes.
Um, uh, I, how about Lacy asked? Um, if in the original plot plan given.
Oh.
Yeah, something like that, because I, I, it looked like the, um, septic, uh, system was under the garage. So Lacy asks if in the original plot plan given or something, yeah, i- if you just do that.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can definitely change that.
So if in the, that'll make, that'll make enough sense to get by.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, of the old and new, new garage. Yeah. Boom, 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 all done.
Great.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve these minutes as, um, as we've edited them?
Motion to approve minutes as edited by Jeff Lacy.
Hey, do I hear a second?
I guess I'll do that, too.
All right, I'll call the roll. David?
Hi.
Airstock?
Hi.
Thompson?
Hi.
Very good. Minutes are unanimously approved. Top share, there we go. Okay. Y'all are back. So, so the next item on the agenda after the minutes is, um, I, I'm, I'm not looking at the agenda, but I believe it's the issue of, of, of chair and clerk.
Yes.
Okay. So.
So isn't Carrie the clerk?
Excuse me?
Isn't Carrie the clerk?
Well, the, the state law requires that a zoning board of appeals elect a chair and a clerk from their membership. So and, and there's no reason that that can't be the same person, especially since we have a, a clerk on staff. But I don't think there's any reason it can't be the same person that I know of, um. So, so normally, you know, the, all this stuff was written long before we had a lot of paid staff on, on zoning boards, and somebody on the board would take the minutes and do the clerk work and send the mail.
I would. I would do that. I did that.
Are, are you volunteering?
No, I did that. I did that for fifteen years. I'm good.
That's so fun.
Okay. All right, so as it sits, um, I'm an associate member, uh, living out of town, um, and, uh, you three are regular members living in Shutsberry. I do not believe an associate member can still chair meetings other than this sort of irregular thing that we're doing tonight. Um, I, if you, if we had a real regulatory matter where it mattered, um, I, I don't think that would pass the, um, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't pass. It would have to be a chair that comes from voting members. So, uh, you three are the voting members. Um, you know, this whole thing could be solved by John and I, again, switching positions, John going to the associate and me, uh, going to a regular member, even though I'm, I don't live in Shutsberry, I could do that. Um, from what I understand. Uh, but I don't want to, because that's, that's the wrong direction. Uh, it's not the direction I'm going in. Uh, but I don't want to, because that's, that's the wrong direction. Uh, it's not the direction I'm going in. Um, so I'm gonna stay an associate member. Um.
Just to be clear, Jeff, you, you, a person living out of town, though, can be a regular member of a board. Not, not just.
If the board is appointed. Not elected, apparently. So I, I, I had to, to resign completely from the planning board.
I see.
I suppose I could have been. I suppose I could have been an associate on the planning board, because that's an appointed thing, but but maybe even not. I mean, Donna has advised that you can do this on ZBA, but you, you can't do it with an elected board. So that's why I'm able to be an associate member. But I'm I'm not, I'm not willing to go back to being a regular member. Because that's the reverse of, of of where I'm going here. Um, so I'm happy to stay.
Did, did he freeze up, Jeff? What else, too?
He froze. I think he said he's happy to stay in the position of chair.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where he was, he was definitely going there.
Before he froze up, yes. Yeah. Let's, let's vote.
I don't know.
At Conway, they'd, they'd have stinky internet up there.
No, he's just the master of suspense over there.
Now he's just too cheap to pay for good internet now.
Uh-oh.
And there he goes.
Yeah.
Hopefully he's signing back on.
Well, yeah. Guy's really trying to make a point. I don't know. He's letting us know just how far away Conway is, I guess. Hope he, hope he didn't crap out completely on this.
Wondering if his computer died. Like if he was using a laptop.
Hmm. Hmm. Yeah, usually when you have a freeze like that, though, it, it's a, it's an internet thing, though. I think.
Yeah, I was, I was having trouble freezing, and I finally had to buy in a router extender.
Oh, is that right?
And put it up here so that I could get. Otherwise, I was getting dropped out of the meetings.
Does it, is it working well, Mary?
It's working fine now.
Yeah, yeah. And how far are you from your base?
So the base that comes in is down in my basement. And I'm on the first floor. So, I mean, everything else works. The TV works and everything, but I kept getting off, dumped off the Zoom, so I put the extension up here on the first floor. And seems to be giving me a total internet now rather than it, rather than the, I'm unstable. And dumping me out.
Right.
But that's the same trouble I was having freezing, because it wasn't. Don't know why, when they built the place, they put that in the basement, but it's in the basement in an enclosed room. It's like like, that wasn't the best place to put it.
You know, can I ask a personal question, Mary? Your background, it, it's, uh, it looks like it almost be, it almost like might be a large wind, what, what do you think, Carrie?
I was saying blurred, like how she blurred her back.
A blur, but it, it seems like a blurred lot, like very large window, almost like in a cathedral. It looks so, so vertical and what.
Yeah, but, but this side is a long a full length window, I mean, a full length window. This side, this one's a regular window, but on either side of my door, I have a full length window, so lot of, um, lot of light. The thing that's nice about it, a lot of, lot of windows on the floor here. I keep trying to find the right space for my computer then. If, if it's earlier in the day that someone light comes through, I have to change around, because, uh, you can't see.
But the thing that's directly behind you, is that, is that just, is just a, a light wall, or is?
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's, um, cherry, cherry paneling.
Uh, okay, interesting. Yeah, it's kind of a cool effect.
I did blur it, I assume. Oh, did I do that? That wanted to go, oh, let's see.
If you go to yours.
There it is. Oh, okay, okay.
This is Carrie. This is brimming around the window.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see.
Yeah, no, that's, that's cool. Yeah. That's interesting, what, what effect that takes when you put the blur on.
When I was sitting there, sitting here one time, I, I put the blur on, only because one time I was sitting here and the storm was going and people were watching the lightning in the windows. It's like, it was becoming distracting.
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit too dramatic. I'm gonna give Jeff a quick call. Uh, I think just to kind of see what's what's going on with him. Okay.
Hmm, no phone either, huh?
No, apparently not. I'm trying it again. Man, this guy went off the grid.
Hmm.
Okay, let me just, let me try one more thing. I'm gonna try try a text.
Yeah, I was gonna say, sometimes a text will work at the phone, won't it?
Yep, that's what I'm gonna do now. Does anybody happen to have a number for Marsha?
No. I can probably come up with that. Hang on. Let me see.
That's your bedtime there?
I hope not. Sorry, I'll try to be more discreet next time you're real. What is Marsha's last name, anyway, John? Do you know?
I don't know. My, my friend Jen lives next door, so I texted her to see if Marsha's got a landline, but.
Oh, okay.
Jen might not be holding her phone. Let me try calling her.
Okay. Here comes Jeff. Hey, bud. We're trying not to take this personally, but. Yeah. Wow. We are, we are, we're just, we're all speculating about, you know, what might have gone on over there, you know, did, did? Uh-huh. Uh, we, let's, let's try that. Let me see. How, uh, yeah, let me, let me just crank this up.
Has he joined, has he joined by phone before?
Um, i- is, so there's a whole different process for that, for that Carrie, that he can come in directly by using his phone. He's saying, can he do it by speaker?
Um, I have no idea, but there is a process where he can join the meeting by the phone by calling a phone number.
But, but I'm just curious, and we, we might, we might go to that, but just if Jeff talks a little bit, and I'm having, I have my phone here. Um, let's just see how it works for us.
Okay, I, I, John, I can certainly hear you and I can hear Carrie.
Yeah, I can hear you.
I can hear you as well.
Can you hear? Okay, Mary?
Yeah, we can hear. It's a little soft, but we can get it.
Okay. And, um, and, and Jeff, you can hear all of us.
Yes, I, I, I tend. And, and I, I am not actually even a part of the quorum, so what the heck? It's, um, I'm, I'm the best one to be, um, to be sort of out of it, but, um, yes, I, I can hear you.
Okay. Well, since we already have this, instead of going through the process of you know, hooking you up again another way and possibly losing you again, why don't we at least go with this as long as it's working?
Okay. Sounds good. I'm, I'm still fooling around with my computer as, as we speak, trying to get it to get me back on, on visual, but, um, right now I, I can't even do anything, so, um, let's just rely on, on what we've got here.
Well, ju- just before you, before you crapped out, John was pretty sure they heard you say that you did, in fact, want to be chair after all. And we all immediately voted on that, so we can probably adjourn at this point.
Well, you know, fortunately, I, I enjoy some immunity for that being an associate. Oh, touche, dudes. You know, the, uh, what I am willing to do is uh, remain as an associate member, uh, serve when needed. When, when another of, of you is, is absent or something, um, and also to, um, to guide whoever is, um, is, is running the show, um, offer assistance, continue to, you know, to assist in writing decisions, um, offer advice, be present at meetings and hearings and things like that, um. And, you know, provide whatever support I can until things have smoothed out a bit. That's what I can offer. So, um, but it's, it, it's really up to, to the three of you to figure out how you, how you're gonna proceed. At this point, I think, um. So, so that's really all I have. All I have to offer.
That sounds great, John. Or, uh, Jeff, I, what I was wondering, um, John Airstock, are you willing to try taking this on with that sort of, um, coaching behind you? I mean, Jeff has a lot of experience with this, and certainly you can write, but he can, he can, you know, these decisions, as you, as you've maybe seen, they're written in a, in a particular form and, and, um, Jeff could help you understand what that is and, um, and, and guide you in that process.
Yeah, and the same could be true for, for Mary, uh, as well. Uh, I as I understand the role of, of chair, there, there are a couple of things that kind of come into play, and you know, one of them is just kind of the role of adminis, I mean, of kind of, uh, running a meeting. You know, you just kind of, you're the one who kind of facilitates that and, uh, moves, moves the agenda along and calls for votes and that, and that sort of thing. Uh, so it's what happens at, at a, at a given meeting of the ZBA online or in person for that matter. And then there's all the stuff that kind of happens behind the scenes, uh, other times leading up to and out of a meeting and and things like that, so there, there are two different things, and uh, it strikes me that the other thing about ZBA is that, yeah, there is a, quite a body of, uh, information and expertise that I think one needs to bring, and that's where Mary and I have kind of like been saying, well, you know, you know, we, we're, we came on and we're kind of, you know, following the lead and learning as we go and so forth, but uh, I'll speak for myself, you know, I, that, the expertise that really is required, I think, to kind of understand uh, and, uh, decipher the matters and communicate them and so forth is not my natural bailiwick. Um, and I hear Jeff saying, yeah, we could help in that, that and so forth, but I just feel from that one, from that perspective, I, I'm just so unqualified and, um, and I'm willing to kind of, you know, be someone who uh, really does continue to learn, uh, certainly to, to, to figure out whatever needs to be figured out in terms of making decisions and so forth and being part of that, but you know, I just compared to Jeff and, and you, John, for that matter, you guys are just so much more in the mindset and, uh, and have the have the experience and expertise to really kind of, um, handle those things, you know, so so I just feel like, you know, I'm, I'm really just not a good, a good candidate for this, even, even with help, you know, on the flanks, um. I just feel that the, the media, that the ZBA would be so much better served with someone who has more, um, has, you know, more awareness of, of what, you know, what this entails, so that's the one thing. The other, the other thing I guess I want to say is uh, when I came on, I was aware that the ZBA was pretty much crumbling, uh, in as much as two of the members. Uh, Herb and, um, I think of the other, the other guy was Chuck, you know, we're, we're on their way out. And it was like it wasn't even a viable entity anymore, and I'm thinking, well, here's a need of the town, and I can certainly step up. You know, and, and be, and make this thing viable again by being a, a voting member, you know, of, of the, um, of the ZBA, but never in my uh, wildest, uh, imagine, imaginings was seeing myself um, being the chair. So, uh, the, the, the only, the only thing I would, I would say is that part of my reason for stepping forward to do that role, just be a, a full member and to vote and so forth. You know, was because I, I figured that the, these meetings are not a regular thing. They happen when they need to happen. It wouldn't be a ton of time, but when I look at what's involved with being the chair, it is more time than I was willing to sign on for and would not have even done so if I thought this was going to be the course that it took. So I'm just trying to be honest with, you know, there are things in my life that I really uh, are just more important to me, that I really want to dedicate my, my time to, um. And if, if the time is in check, the way I imagined it would be, I'm good with being here and actually enjoy being part of this group. Um, but I, I just don't want to take on that, especially that, the stuff that happens in the background. Just don't want to do it. Um, having said that, I, if there was, I heard Jeff saying, I think, John, I heard you articulate. Um, having said that, I, if there was, I heard Jeff saying, I think, John, I heard you articulate something similar. Uh, when you were at a meeting, you want to be the guy that can kind of like sit back and listen to what's going on and kind of troubleshoot and step in with your expertise as opposed to having to be, you know, the guy who just kind of is facilitating and, and whatever energy and focus it takes to do that, you'd like to be freed of that. And if there was some way that I could, you know, kind of be a meeting facilitator, you know, and, and allow you, you guys to kind of, you know, be a little more, um, on, on stage all the time. Um, that, that would, that would somehow help. That's, that's something I would feel comfortable doing. I think that is in my arena of talents, but. But as I said, you know, that when it gets to any of the legal aspects and, uh, protocol and the just, you know, just all the stuff that has to happen, uh, to kind of make these requests, you know, um, that come to us, kind of fly through the paces, um. That's not, that's not something I want to sign up for, and that, that's why I don't, that's why I don't want to be chair, because that's what the chair is responsible for. Sorry for being so long-winded.
So I, I would say somewhat similar, you know, I feel really uncomfortable not having the knowledge at this point to jump in and be chair or, or represent the committee as chair in other places, because I just, I'm not familiar enough with the rules and laws and all the regulations, um, at this time. I mean, in the interim, I, I actually apply, put in to be an associate member on the planning board, so I could at least hear some more and learn some more about how you apply rule, the rule, some of the rules and regulations and things, but, uh. You know, just having a few months on board here and only a couple of examples, I just, you know, don't think I'm even with no looking at some of the things, all of the things that need to be considered. I, I, I'm just too new. To, to be able to, to do that, and then, I guess I don't, I joined with the same expectation that Jeff was gonna live forever. Um, but that we, but that we would have time to learn it and to learn all of the things before we even ever thought about taking on, you know, more responsibility to be able, you know, when you get yourself to be chair, people expect you to know the regs and have the answers, and when they call you, they expect you to be able to do that, and you know, I can look them up, but I have to read through every single page as opposed to Jeff's just flips them over and knows. Uh, I don't have that kind of knowledge yet. Um, and that's my hesitancy too, you know.
Yeah, I hear both of you. Um, you know, the way this was pitched to me, uh, by Jeff was that exactly what you said, there were two new members of the board who didn't have a lot of experience, and you know, would I be willing to come on as an associate and just sort of lend some expertise? And I thought, you know, sure, I mean, the ZBA doesn't meet that often, and, um, the time that I did serve as a regular member, as I said earlier, I, I also filled the clerk position, you know, so I, um. Took all the minutes, I wrote the decisions, I, you know, it was, and and worked as a, as a member, listened to the thing and had to vote on it, you know, it was, it was a lot, and, um, and I've already been a chair of, of the planning board, you know, for seven years, so. Um, I said, sure, I'm, I'm happy to come on as sort of an associate member, um. Yes, I have a lot of experience with zoning, you know, I've written it, I've enforced it, um. I've been a former member of this team, but, um, I said, I don't want to be the chair, and this had been pitched to me earlier when Chuck Damari was getting ready to leave, he called me and asked, and I said, no, you know, I don't, I don't have time for it, I don't have the energy for it, and frankly, at this point in my life, I don't want to be the chair. So it sounds like we're at a little bit of an impasse here. Um. Jeff, you said that you thought that, um, there was some interest from Michael Pill in the zoning board?
He had expressed interest, um. Yes, and I, I think that was around the time that, that I was out there recruiting and, uh, you, you and he were, uh, were, uh, contemporaneous, um, and, um, I, I, I went with you. You don't have the baggage that, uh, that Michael does, um.
Yeah, he's, he's, there's that, but he does know the law and he, um, you know, he could run a meeting.
He could.
I think, I think there's a lot of concerns about him, though. You know, even though he can run the meeting, he tends to let his own personal views dictate a lot of the things that he, uh, gets involved in, you know, and some question about the impartiality that he, that he has given kind of work that he does.
Folks who he's worked for?
Y- y- yeah, the, the, I, I remember, I don't, I don't know about his personal leanings and his administrative style or anything like that, but I, I do remember the meeting that Mary and I were kind of appointed, um. He was a candidate that came before the, uh, committee, or maybe the, the, the select board as well. Um, and there were a number of people from the community at that, at that, uh, meeting as well. And there was some real opposition expressed, not, not because of who he is personally, but, but because he had represented clients at which there seemed like there might be a conflict of interest. Um, and I don't know, I don't know if there's a way around that, if that's, I mean, because, because you're right, John, he does certainly bring a high level of expertise to this and would, you know, based on that would be an asset, I would think, but I, I don't, I don't know if we, if we could, we could get past. I mean, what would make it different this time with the select board appointing him if, um, if they weren't able to do it before? Asking.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's some history that I didn't, I wasn't aware of. I'll, I knew that, um, Jeff had mentioned his name before.
Yeah, well, um. Yeah, when, when, when the call went out for TBA members, I mean, he responded to me. Um, I, I didn't seek him out, um. But I'm, you, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm wary of Michael, he has a very strong personality and, and a lot of knowledge. I think he would, he would quickly, I don't know, I, yeah, um. I mean, but there was a ZBA meeting that Chuck Damari chaired, but this had to be. Let's see, I can't remember who was on the ZBA then, whether John, you were on, or Herb, or I, I can't remember who it was. I know I was at the zoning board meeting and um, uh, Michael was actually scheduled, uh, you know, a- as a, you know, um, there's somebody coming before us, but there was somebody before him on the agenda, and, um, they were, uh, they were talking, um, a- a- about their project, and apparently it, um. Apparently it, it, and, and then, and then Michael started advising that, almost like a lawyer a- at this meeting, and then, then Michael grew impatient with, uh, with these people because they were taking too long and he was next on the agenda. And finally, he just ended up just in insulting these people and, and, but the poor woman was crying and, um, it was the, it was the most chaotic and, and ridiculous zoning board meeting I, I, even Chuck was, uh, was speechless. Uh, you, you, you think that Chuck would, would, would corral Michael, but he was just letting fly on this poor, poor couple, a- and the woman was upset and and Michael just wanted to, to get on to his business and he, he had it with these people and it was, it, it was a train wreck of a meeting.
Wow.
Um, and, and I've never forgotten that, you know, it's, it's just, you know, Michael has a fuse and when it burns down, boom, off he goes. So, um.
It's potentially problematic.
Yeah, I mean, I like him, I enjoy him, he's a zoning expert, he's great fun to talk to, but, um. But I, I, I don't know if he's got the temperament. I mean, the first time I ever met or ever saw Michael Pill was when I was in grad school and the professor said, go out to a town meeting and see what government is like in New England. So a few other students and I, back in the eighties, we went to the Hadley Town Meeting and we, we witnessed Michael being dragged out by the police screaming at the top of his lungs. That was, that was the first time I ever saw Michael.
Okay, that leaves an impression, I'm sure. Well, well, let, let's, let's pursue all the leads at least that we can, uh, because I remember the other thing that was kind of in the mix for a while was conversation about maybe, uh, someone from the planning board. I mean, I think, Jeff, your, your vision was kind of like ideally to have someone who was on the planning board and the zoning, or they could kind of act like a bridge or liaison. You know, and I think there was even a time where you were thinking, what if someone who was, and I don't know if he had someone in particular in mind or not, but someone who would be, like, tied in from the planning board or might want to do double, you know, you know, work on both committees, you know, might come on to the ZBA? And be a member is, was, was that just kind of a theoretical thing, or was there something that you were thinking in particular?
I, I, I think it's good practice. I, I, I just answered a question on my planted list the other day, somebody asked, have you ever heard of, um, a planning board and zoning board chair having a member in common? And I'm sure people from around the state said, yes, uh, we, we do, we've done that in our town. And then I chimed in from Chutesberry and said, yes, we've done it, and I think it's worked well. Um, I, I think it's a good practice, because often zoning and planning boards don't have anything to do with each other, have no idea what's going on. They, they don't really work at them, you know, for, you know, in, in, in a, for common purposes, they're often their own little silos, so I think it's great, um.
Did you have someone in, in mind? I mean, when you think about who's on the planning board, is there, is there someone who might put, put that profile?
I, I would take anyone, actually, um, um. You know, Steve Bressler was, uh.
You want to keep your friends, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, I, I agree, I think it's a good idea, and like, like, I, I don't know if Jeff was back on the call when I said that I actually did put in to be an associate member on the planning board, mostly because it would help me learn more and learn faster, and, and I do think there are places where they interconnect. It remains to be seen whether they'll accept me as an associate member, but, you know. I, I do think that, that there's a big, um, a big help if you had somebody that was on both. And that, and especially from a learning perspective too. I mean, you're talking about looking at it for somebody that could cheer the ZBA. You know, either way, I think it's a good, uh, it's a good learning experience.
The fact that, um, Jeff Weston was, actually, uh, appeared at, at our meeting, I, I think it was for the Whitman Project. Uh, he was here and, you know, really kind of involved in promoting that and kind of speaking, speaking on behalf of that project and, um, I, I didn't know if Jeff was kind of like someone who is geared that way and might actually enjoy or have interest in kind of being on both like that? Have you ever approached him on that, Jeff?
No, I haven't talked to any of them. I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit, I, I, yeah, I, I haven't been to a planning board meeting since, um, early September, I think, so, um, yeah. But I, you know, I, I think somebody like Jeff Weston coming on both would be fine, but I, 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 I don't know if, if that's your chair or not. Because, you know, that person's probably gonna say what, what you say, John, I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to learn to pick this up, and it's gonna take, you know, a number of years before I'm ever chair material, um. So, I, I don't know if, if that's where you're gonna get your chair from, um.
So let me, let me ask, um, it seems like we're being out there pretty honest with, open about a lot of things, um. John, just, just going with your, with your level of expertise, are there ways that the chairmanship could be crafted, um, uh, with certain things mitigated or whatever to other people or whatever that would make it palatable to you in a way that you would want to take it on, or is it just, just not gonna happen? Even, even, even if it was to kind of manipulate a little bit in terms of the job description?
I think it's, it, it's too much, it's too much responsibility. You know, I don't want to take that much responsibility on, I got enough other things that I'm involved in.
Well.
Have you seen any, John, have you seen anything done differently since you have the experience?
I made an ammirst, you know, um. Actually, with the, with the planning board, oh, well, and the ZBA, they actually sort of rotate the, um, chairmanship, so meetings are run by different members, you know, e- each, each new meeting is, is run by a different member, so everybody, um, shares that load.
So, at, at, at one meeting, the one chair, at, at the conclusion of the meeting, one chair would, would relinquish the chairmanship to another member, um. Until the end of the next meeting or something like that, and that person would, would handle the, the behind the scenes stuff during that interval period?
I think that's how it works. I can check on that, um, this week. I, I still know some folks on those boards.
Yeah. Because that's, you know, that's the, um, that's the sort of real work of, of, of a chair, I mean, but being chair is easier now, given that there's a land use clerk in town, um, although Carrie, I hear you're, you're, you're off, uh, pretty soon, but anyway, with a land use clerk, it's, um, a, a lot of the functions that, that the chairs used to have to do or the clerks on the board used to have to do are now, uh, done by the land use clerk. And I, I know speaking for myself, it, it makes things a lot easier on me to have Carrie doing her thing that she does, especially now.
Oh, yeah.
Up, up to speed on, on, on what the procedures are.
No, I, I, I advocated hard for that when I was on the ZBA previously, because you know, it just, uh, I started working, it was one thing when I ran my own business and I could sort of steal time and, you, you know, write decisions and, and do advertisements and that kind of thing, but when I started working full-time, you know, for another municipality, I, I really didn't have that time available anymore and, and talked to Chuck about it, and that's when we hired Linda, she was already doing that work for the Conservation Commission, and I said, look at, there's already somebody in town who knows how to do this, let's, why, why don't we just, you know, see if she's interested? So that's how, that's how that came about, and it was, it was, um, it was invaluable, uh, just, just as you say, Jeff, because there's somebody that knows how to do it and, you know, gets paid to do it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping that they're able to find somebody to replace Carrie that, that has previous experience, because it would be hard. And Carrie can probably speak more than me to, to learn all of this with all of us being new. It's, it's really hard.
I agree.
It's some, it's, sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, you can speak to the learning curve, I guess.
Yeah, um, I mean, Linda did help me here and there, but she was also in the process of leaving and, um, when I started, there was still a lot of COVID procedures and measures, so I never really got to meet with her one-on-one. It was a few handful of Zoom meetings explaining like the basics, and then after that, I kind of was learning on my own. That's why I'm hoping, that's why I had, um, Becky put the posting out as early as possible, so that way they could find someone hopefully to overlap with me, so that way I could have those times with person on one-on-one and teach them what I had learned, kind of what I wish I had when I first started, so.
Well, yeah, I didn't, I'm real learning tonight, Carrie, that, that you're, that you're, uh, on your way off of the role. Having been new to all this, I'm sad about that in a way. I'm, I'm hope it's, it's all for good reasons for you, but I think you've been doing a great job and. Yeah, I'm just really, really sorry to hear that you'll be, be leaving us.
Yeah, I, this, this is one of two jobs that I'm working and. Um, I'm working to get my drinking water operator licenses to have one full-time job.
Understandable. How, what, do you, do you have a sense of your timeframe on?
Not at the moment. I finished up a recently short course as a refresher because I had taken two previous courses earlier. I'm looking to schedule my exams. And then from there, I'm kind of just going to be job searching until I find something that fits me or something. So it's kind of. Up in the air. Once I find out more, gladly be able to share as soon as possible, but. Kind of just taking it one step at a time. I just wanted to post it. Sooner than later, just to make it easier with training if it's possible.
You know, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, in, in some towns. There, there is not a zoning board, right? There's, it's the planning board. Absorbs those roles. Is that, is, am I, am I mistaken about that?
No, the, the, the select board would be the zoning board of appeals if there's no.
I see.
If, 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 no, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, select board acts as such un- until such time as the zoning board is created and is up and running.
I see.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know, might we, might we consider the, the, the rotating chair duties amongst the three of you that are regular members? Rotate the chair around as, as John was, was, was talking about. So, you know, during the interval when you're, you are chair then. You know, you would, you would chair at least one meeting and deal with the, the in-between stuff along with Carrie and her successor. I mean, I would agree to stick around as an associate member to fill in. For members and also to advise whoever is the chair. You know, be on call at all times to advise. I, I, I could also help with decision making, decision writing, not making, but writing. I've been writing the planning board decisions and the zoning board decisions for a long time. So, you know, that's. That's kind of a booger bear if, if you're not used to it, especially if it's controversial thing. So I'd be willing to help with the decisions. Uh, for whoever is, is the chair. I don't know, maybe that, you know, divide the responsibility like that.
So I think the way it must go, Jeff, if I'm thinking back to these. Meetings of the Amherst zoning board is. A case came, comes in, it's my turn in the bullpen, I. Take that case. If the case goes more than one meeting. I'm, I'm the chair, you know, I see that case through. The next, the next one that comes up, it's John's turn. Same kind of thing. So I might be responsible for running more than one meeting, depending on how many meetings it takes to, to shepherd the thing through. But. Most of what we do here in Chutesbury goes through pretty quickly. I mean. What, how many times did you meet with Whitman? Once. And the, you know, the, the thing on, on Cooleyville Road, that was dispatched at a single meeting.
Our, our, our cases, well, well, we've had some dogs down at the lake. You know, that's where, that's where the, the, the thing could get unpleasant.
I remember from, yes, when I, when I. Sat on the board, we had a couple down there too, where folks wanted to add a second story onto their front row cottage and. You know, it was going to block the view of the three people behind them and it was, it was pretty contentious.
Exactly. But, you know, a, a lot of the other stuff that we do is, you know, occasionally we will approve an accessory apartment. And we do a lot of these backyard ground mounted solar things.
Right.
Generally, you know, one, you know, one-shot deals and they go through pretty quickly.
So those go through fast. Yeah. I mean, the, the big, the big advantage to this is that. Mary and John, you, you start coming up to speed. Faster because you, you know, you're, you're doing it. I mean, the thing needs to get advertised. Twice before the meeting and then the meet, you know, the meeting's posted and. Yeah, I, I, I see that it would, it, it might be a, it might be a good way to go.
Well, yeah, then.
Jeff, Jeff, Jeff can't see that Carrie has.
Carrie's got her hand up, Jeff.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. If it helps, during permits, a lot of the time I'll receive the permit. I'll send it out to everyone and then usually from there. From my past experience, so the chair usually. Comes up with a, a meeting date, speaks with the applicant, speaks with everyone else, comes up with a meeting date, lets me know. And then I'll take care of the butter notices. I'll take care of the legal ads, kind of like the behind the scene work. I usually kind of just. Update the chair like, hey, this is done at this time. So we're on track. If anything occurs, otherwise I'll. Kind of inform until the meeting opens. So usually there, a lot of the behind the scenes stuff is done by me and it's just me updating the chair and working with the chair if. Anything goes awry.
Yeah, that's terrific. And that's, that, that's the stuff that, you know, there's a little bit of a learning curve on. So when does this have to happen again? Oh, right. That's, yeah, seven days, 14 days. Yep.
Yeah, a lot of that spelt out in those really helpful checklists.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually the one thing that I do need like help with is that in the legal ads. The sections where the special permit or whatever application is that hand relates to within the bylaw. That needs to be referenced is the only thing that usually kind of trips me up because I'm still kind of learning that. That's, that's usually the only thing that I usually need help on.
What do you think, folks? I'm willing to try it this way.
Yeah, I'm. I'm leery, but I. Cause I, I think, you know, what, what we're basically saying is, you know, the things that we're worried about. Are still going to happen. They're just going to happen in little blocks of time as opposed to continuously. But it is.
It's not going to happen long enough to induce a nervous break.
I mean, the thing of it is I, I, I really, when I'm, when I'm with a group, you know, I want to be a team player. I want to, you know, carry my weight and do what, you know, I can do well. I, I guess the, the. Our options before us are limited, you know, so I, I don't have a better. A better solution to how to, how to kind of drag ourselves forward. You know, it's, it seems like a limping operation. I'm really, I'm really scared about, you know. You know, that transition between Carrie and a new person. That could be a major. A major demand and, and a lot of pressure for the person who is in charge at that time.
Yeah. But. Yeah. As, as Carrie said, we have some very helpful checklist now that, that explained to. You know, the board members, the, the, the clerk and even the applicants, how these permits go. It's, I mean, every step is listed and who's responsible. And the dates they're done and any kind of time limits are listed. So. You know, u- using that checklist, you really can't go wrong. And Carrie keeps one of those for every permit that comes in, you know, she'll start filling it out and. Down the checklist you go from the, from, you know, from all the notices and, you know, the application and the notices and then the hearing part and then the decision part. I mean, i- in a special permit, there are 20 steps. That all have to be followed and with varying responsibility, but it's all in the checklist, all there, one page. So. You know, it, it's not like anything has to be memorized.
No, and it's the same every time. I mean, you know, once you've been through it, you. It gets easier.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we have a lot of firepower on this, on this committee to be sure, you know, and especially Jeff with you kind of being in there as an associate and so forth. I. I guess I want to check in with you. I mean, I always imagine that when you move to Conway, you would be looking to. You know, plant yourself in their book, planning board or their zoning board of appeals or. Are you, are you really committed to kind of? Being with us for the foreseeable future as, as an associate?
Yes, I, I, I will stick around. I, I have not joined any boards in Conway yet. Yeah, I haven't done any of that yet. It's actually kind of nice. I, I probably will at some point. But not, not right away. Having, having too much fun actually being retired. So, but I'm, I'm happy to, you know, continue in, in Chutesbury. I, you know, frankly, I love zoning. I love zoning and zoning law. And I like doing this stuff. But I would rather be more like a, like sort of a staff person or a, a resource. Than someone who's responsive, you know, responsible as, as a chair. So, you, you know, you, you could think of me as sort of a town planner type person who could occasionally fill in. A- as an associate member when needed, but. Normally I would just be on the sideline answering questions and giving you guys advice and stuff like that.
So I guess my question, this is for John. If, so something complicated come up, would you be willing to be the chair for that one?
Sure.
We could like start for something smaller came up that's a little easier to get our feet wet with.
Yeah.
You mean like something, something gnarly down at the lake? That, that would be, yeah, I mean, that's where your, your complicated stuff is, is probably, that's where you're going to see. You know. That's where you're going to see that. So, so Mary, what you're asking is if, if John would agree to be the chair for some kind of. Thing like we see at the lake.
Yeah, or, I mean. Then probably the, that's where most of it would be, but it could be someplace else in town that came up too. If there was something that looked like it was going to be. Complicated running through it.
Carrie's got her hand up.
It's not definite, but I've received an email about a possible project in the future on the lake. I'm a big believer in more notice, the better. So they, they, they asked me a bunch of questions. I answered and add a bunch of questions for them because it's still a drafting work. But somewhere in the future, I think the zoning board will be receiving a special permit for a project on the lake, just as a heads up.
FYI, yeah.
Yeah. Not to scare anyone, but just.
So would the way to proceed be to kind of say, okay. I, we'll go with this format and then kind of wait to see what comes in. Uh, to say, okay, who will step forward for, for. Uh, chairing this particular aspect of our work?
Sure.
Okay.
And that sounds, that sounds okay to me too.
Good. I think we've figured this out.
Okay. Do we, do we need to? I don't know. Do we need to vote on this or just, just? Leave it at where, where it's at?
We can leave it where it's at, Jeff. We, we've come to consensus and. You know, I, I imagine some of this conversation is going to show up in the minutes and that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree that I think. I think our consensus is, works for me.
All right, so.
Still look a little hesitant there, John.
Excuse me?
The other, John.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I missed what you, what you said, Mary.
You look a little hesitant still.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I, I realize I don't, I don't hear a better solution and. We have to, we have to somehow. Figure a way to, to make this work. So. I, you know, I'm. It's not a temptation, but I, but I'm also willing. As I said, I want to be, I want to be a team player in this, so. I mean, I guess, I, I, I don't know if we can adjourn without a. I mean, we were, I guess technically John is the chair right now, right? So it's not like we don't have. Someone who has signed that label right now. So, so whether we. You pass the torch for the next one, John, or whether you just kind of stay in that role for the next thing that comes up, I guess, to be determined, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can, I can. Move to adjourn before you don't have any other businesses. Or anything else we need to talk about?
No, I think if we're okay on this.
All right, make a motion that we adjourn. It's eight twenty.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
John?
David, David, I.
And I'll say I too.
Hi. So, so it is. Carrie, keep us posted and Jeff, if, if something comes to you, let me know.
I shall. I think my phone number is on a few things, so if anything does, I will let you know.
Thanks for your help.
All right.
Thank you guys.
What a team.
Night.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, yes.
Thanks, Carrie.
You're welcome.